Did I hear it, or was I hearing things?
We are recording.
Okay, great, thank you. Welcome, everyone. It's Monday, May thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. It's time for our regularly scheduled city council meeting. Clerk certify a meeting notice, please.
This meeting has been noticed in accordance with Idaho Code seven four dash two zero four.
Clerk call roll.
Councilmember Jacobs. Councilmember Jorgensen.
Here.
Councilmember Page.
Here.
Councilmember Rasmussen.
Here.
Thanks if you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The United States of America. To the Republic, for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Item D changes to the agenda. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move to approve the consent agenda as written.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Your number clerk call roll.
Councilmember Jacobs. Yeah. Councilmember Jorgensen.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Rasmussen.
Yes.
Thank you. There's no special business tonight. Item G one. This is the continuation from our last meeting on the twenty-second of March regarding the extension of DSRFY twenty twenty-one dash eleven. Live, Work, Create. Jenna. Maybe you can come up for a moment, please.
Mayor and members of the council.
Yes, go ahead.
At the previous meeting, the council had requested that the applicant revise a written statement, statement that would reflect what was discussed at that meeting for the reason for request. And the written materials didn't quite match or didn't match the discussion that was had. The applicant has done so, and the draft decision document has been reflected to accordingly. And with that, I stand for any questions.
Any questions of staff? I see Mr. Jones is online with us. Any questions of Mr. Jones?
Thank you.
Mr. Jones, do you have any comments?
I don't think so. I mean, I think I just wrote the email and reflected kind of what was discussed.
Hey, thank you. Hey, council matters properly before you.
Councilmembers, does anyone have discussion?
President of the council. I believe that Mr. Jones complied with the request of this council as we discussed a lack of clarity on the application. And the email that was submitted, although in very tiny font, meets the requirement as I understood and expected.
Thank you. Does member Rasmussen?
No, no, I'm satisfied with with the amended application.
Great. Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
With a unanimous vote, I guess, I move to approve DS R Y, R R F Y twenty twenty-one dash zero zero zero, zero zero eleven, the continuous extension. That is.
Motion and a second.
I would second.
And we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion to grant the extension? Your number clerk call roll.
Councilmember Jorgensen.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Rasmussen.
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Yes.
Thank you. Next item, item, or pardon me. Item G two. This is SAP F Y twenty twenty-three dash one. Changes to the development agreement to be consistent with the required changes as conditioned by the decision on SAP F Y twenty twenty-three dash one. We'll give Ms. Thornborough a chance to get up here.
Mayor, members of the council, thank you. If I may take a little liberty and just because the next two items are directly related, present, and discuss all three. And a staff report, the three items that are before you tonight related to specific area plan twenty twenty-three, number one, are ordinance ten forty-three twenty-four, and that is the ordinance within the specific area plan that would essentially, not essentially, would create the zoning regulations. And so it would be adopted into the Garden City ordinances as zoning regulations. And the second item is ordinance ten forty-four twenty-four, which would rezone the, the property that was addressed in the, the application to the, be required to have that zoning ordinance that would have, that's been presented. I'm not speaking very well. Where it's SAPD oh one would be the district number, and that would be called the River Club, the residences at River Club. And the, the third item is there was a requirement that that property have a development agreement, which would be included in the rezone. And all three items went through the public hearing process with the specific area plan application, and the council conditioned those three items. And the conditions of approval spelled out what needed to occur. And so this is really a compliance review tonight that the zoning ordinance and the development agreement slash master plan meet the criteria that was established in that original decision document. And staff has worked with the applicant, had some back and forth to get it to where we believe and that the applicant is meeting the, the conditions of approval. And with that, I stand for any questions.
Questions of staff. Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, item G two, before you, the, a first course of action would be to clarify that the development agreement is in compliance with condition of approval, requiring a development agreement and the contents of that agreement.
Mr. Mayor. Having reviewed the document, I would move to approve SAP F Y twenty twenty-three dash zero 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 one, changes to development agreement.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second. Discussion on the motion? You're in on clerk call roll.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Rasmussen.
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen.
Yes.
Thank you. Next item, item G three. This is ordinance ten forty-three dash twenty-four. It creates the zoning ordinance. Referred to as SAPPO in the Garden City code. So this ordinance will, will create the reference as described in the description, and then the next item will be the actual rezone component. So it's staff recommendation that we do the first reading on the next two items this evening.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move for our city clerk, Madam Clerk, to read ordinance ten forty-three dash twenty-four by title only for the first reading.
Got a motion and a second. Discussion on the motion? You're in on clerk call roll.
Councilmember Rasmussen.
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs. Councilmember Jorgensen.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Ordinance ten forty-three dash twenty-four, an ordinance of the City of Garden City and Municipal Corporation of the State of Idaho, amending Garden City Code Title Eight Development Code, Chapter One, General Regulations, Article A, Purpose, Applicability, and Interpretations, Section Five Interpretation, Section, subsection six, Conflicting Provisions, and adding a new Chapter Eight Specific Area Plan Project Ordinances, repealing all other, all ordinances or parts thereof to the extent that they conflict with this ordinance, providing all other ordinances included in the official code are still in effect, notwithstanding some provisions thereof being eliminated, providing for sever, a separability clause, approving a summary of the ordinance, and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Next item is item G four, ordinance ten forty-four dash twenty-four. Our staff recommendation is to read this for the first reading this evening.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move for the first reading of ordinance ten forty-four dash two four by title only.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? You're in on clerk call roll.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Rasmussen.
Yes.
Ordinance ten forty-four dash twenty-four, an ordinance of the City of Garden City and Municipal Corporation, providing for rezone of certain real property described herein from R two Low Density Residential to SAP dash zero one slash DA Specific Area Plan, residents at River Club, classification with a development agreement, amending the zoning map of the City of Garden City to reflect said change, providing for separability, approving a summary of the ordinance, and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Next item on agenda is item G five. This is a public hearing on resolution eleven seventy-three dash twenty-four. Is amending the public works fee schedule. Colin, you have a, Mr. Schmidt, you have a available for any questions for you or, or Lisa? Page two eighty. I'm sorry, I'm sitting here delayed. Hey, background, background on this.
Mayor, councilmembers, the the short explanation is that as times change, so do our fee schedules. Recently, we've had quite a few ADU, additional dwelling unit requests come in, and we never had a a way of dealing with those when they, when they signed up for utilities or how we were going to figure that out. This helps us take care of that, that situation. Keep in mind, this only deals with Garden City. There's also a Boise component to each one of these EDUs that we deal with separately that comes from the City of Boise. So this strictly deals with us, with the Garden City portion of it.
Hey, any questions, counsel? Hey, what's the pleasure of the council?
Mr. Mayor, we do need to open the public hearing.
That's what I was gonna say next.
I knew you were.
Okay, this is a public hearing item. Our council president, we'll see if anybody signed up on this item. Hey, no one signed up. We do have some online guests. Anybody online wish to speak to this item? If so, use your raise your hand. Hey, seeing none. Let the record reflect that no public testimony has been requested or heard. And with that, I'll close the public hearing on resolution eleven seventy-three dash twenty-four. And now the matter is properly before the council.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move to to pass resolution number one one seven three dash twenty-four. Second.
Okay.
You get to pick the second. Thank you. Got a motion and a second. Discussion on the motion? You're in on clerk call roll.
Councilmember Jorgensen.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Rasmussen.
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Yes.
Next item is item G six. This is another resolution eleven seventy-four dash twenty-four, authorizing the planning official execute restricted build agreements on behalf of Garden City and provide an effective date. It's two ninety-three.
Mayor, members of the council, thank you. The, the reason that staff has proposed resolution eleven seventy-four twenty-four is for efficiency sake. Currently, right now, Garden City hasn't adopted process procedure to allow for subdivisions to enter into what we call a restricted build agreement, which allows for building construction to begin prior to the completion of the subdivision. And that build agreement is recorded on the property, so anybody wishing to purchase the property would know that there is a restriction on the, on the the property that they would be purchasing until that subdivision is completed. And the way that that functions now is we bring that restricted build agreement request back to the city council when somebody in development is requesting to utilize that. Nearly all subdivisions in Garden City are utilizing that process because the way that the, the, the subdivisions are, they're typically townhomes on long skinny narrow lots, and it's really hard to deal with the house drainage as well as the subdivision drainage separately. If, if they were to do that, they would have to go back in and redo all where they typically put their drainage in the, in the dry aisles. It tends to be very cut and dry when they can enter into that. They need to be meeting the requirements as conditioned by the city council and the, in the agreement. And so for efficiency sake, staff is suggesting that that might be one agreement that the city council may choose to defer to staff, and that there's not a lot of wiggle room in the, in the agreement or when to enter into the agreement than when it come back to the council otherwise. And with that, I stand for any questions.
Hey, questions? Hey, it's really an advantage for our folks when they can these confined spaces take care of the house drainage and the street drainage at the same time. And it increases the reduces the timeline in the project. So, okay, without any questions, resolution eleven seventy-four dash twenty-four is before the council.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Finding good cause for this, I move to approve resolution one one seven four dash twenty-four.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? You're in on clerk call roll.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Rasmussen.
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen.
Yes.
Thank you. Next item, item G seven, resolution eleven seventy-five twenty-four. This is relating to surplus property. And allowing us to transfer, dispose of that property. Counsel, do you have questions on this one? Hey, what's the pleasure of the council?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve resolution one one seven five dash twenty-four. Related to the disposal of surplus property.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Discussion on the motion? You're in on clerk call roll.
Councilmember Rasmussen.
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Thanks. We have no one finished business tonight. New business, we need to have a discussion about the forty-third and Shindon pedestrian crossing. On page three thirty-nine in the packet. I think you heard from our staff. Chief, would you wanna come up and Jenna, you wanna come up, please? And the genesis of this council is that this is, this discussion's been ongoing for, for quite some time. And the Idaho Department of Transportation, which has the operational control over Shindon Boulevard as a state highway, has resisted getting on board with that. Apparently, that position has softened or changed with personnel changes or for some reason. And the A County Highway District, which would actually be doing the work, wants to know if the city's in favor of this or not. And that's progressed to the point where we need to have that internal discussion. There's there's planning goals that support other crossings to get across Shindon, and there's public safety concerns based on the experience that our chief has had. So that's the, that's the gist of it. So you've got memos in the packet. And I think with our two department heads here, we can include them in any discussion they have and questions you have. Think the information they both presented was presented the, the issues. So your mayor'd like to know what to tell the highway district. So questions? Is there anything about the memos that anybody doesn't understand or would like to have elaborated upon?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Chief. If I read correctly, and just tell me if I'm wrong, that you were concerned about the queuing at VMP backing, coming into the crossing zone. Is that correct, or?
No, what I'm concerned about is as much as technology's nice, and they like to think these lights are timed, they're not. And so it'll, the, the, the signal, if they put it in, will back traffic up into the Curtis and VMP intersection, not the opposite way around. And especially with Curtis and Shindon being very strategic thoroughfares for emergency vehicles, particularly ambulances. When you throw an opticom in there, that changes the timing and all that technology. Just, I, I just asked A C H D what they think about having optcoms on Eagle Road. And so they're just too close for the flow of traffic. I've been around long enough that we had a signal at forty, as VMP and Shindon and at forty-fourth and Shindon before Curtis came down. And once Curtis came down and they opened that up, and we took the signal out of forty-fourth, traffic was better, crashes went down. And so these, these things never, they're never timed. If you'll watch the one at thirty, on VMP as you approach State Street on the other side of the river, AC, you know, A C H D, when I met with them, you know, even said that there's issues with that. And so that's my concern is we already, VMP and Shindon is already a very congested intersection. We just don't need that from a traffic standpoint, when we already have a crosswalk at VMP and Shindon, which we don't have any issues with with pedestrian crashes and bike crashes related to that.
Okay.
We just don't need another one right there. There's other safety concerns in, in Garden City such as Adams and the forty-fourth and forty-third where I think we'd be better off asking A C H D to look at some things there.
Okay, thank you. I did, did clear it up for me because I was picturing heading east on Shindon being the problem, but you're more concerned about people coming up Shindon, front end of town.
If they're gonna, if they're going northbound on VMP to go west on Shindon, or even coming north, southbound on VMP to turn east on Shindon. Right now, it already backs up, and we already have people run red lights because of the time, the timing of the lights and that. Whatever their excuse is. And so just concerned about adding another impediment to traffic flow two blocks away are a busy intersection.
Got you. Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor. Yes, sir.
So forty-third is really close to VMP, obviously. Is is there really any other options to move it further west? I mean, or is that kind of it? I mean, forty-third is either the option or it's not.
I think the main reason they wanted it is because they assumed that kids from Future and Charter would use it. However, the way that they, this is planned out, hey, I don't think they're gonna use it. There's not that many kids that live within walking distance to get down there. They're gonna go across, and they have buses that answer now. And so honestly, big picture, long term, something further west is probably gonna be needed if the building that we have north of Shindon and north of Adams in particular, on forty-fourth and forty-fifth at the cellar. It's gonna be a lot of traffic that we're gonna have to figure out. They're either gonna have to come all the way down to fiftieth and come up to Shindon to grab a light, or potentially put some, a light somewhere between VMP and fiftieth.
But I T D isn't really looking at any of the other location or.
Chief, Jenna would probably know better.
And Mayor, Councilmember Jacobs, in the, and this is a long planning effort that has occurred, and there, there, I, it's unfortunate that we don't have members from A C H D here that, I don't but they had looked at just going a little bit further west at forty-fourth Street and had rejected that that proposal for a couple of reasons. One of which is just that walking distance where it doesn't seem like it's that far. But when you start increasing even three additional minutes, people start having poor behaviors. And so they might do the leapfrog anyway, even though they have a crosswalk that's fairly close was one of the reasons. And then another reason when they first started, I T D was the first that brought up concerns about the queuing. Different than the, somewhat different than the police department's concern. And the police department is obviously worried about the rear-ending crashes as well. But A C H D before, before it went to the A C H D doing the report, Compass received a hundred and eight comments about potentially moving it to thirty-third street. It's just relocating and crossing because of the pressure that the community is going to see to be able to cross. And fifty-six percent were against a different crosswalk location, and thirty-eight percent were for. And at that point, that's when it went to A C H D to, to do the Kittleson report that's in your packet. And so it was looked at, but ended up going through the process and being approved at the initial location. Another reason is because it's a, a straight shot from the bench. You have the conversions of the three low-stress pathways, and then an easy way to get across down forty-third street, which would be a low-stress route all the way to the greenbelt where that's an A C H D classification. They have low stress for all users, including children, low stress for most adults, and then they have high increased stress for all users. And so that would create a convergence of three regional low-stress routes all the way to the greenbelt. And so.
Chief. This is a question. You mentioned in Jenna's note, they mentioned that there've been a hundred and nineteen crashes on VMP and Shindon. Is that, what's the time? Time frame of those hundred?
They didn't ask us.
So that's, and have there ever been any fatalities?
Not by intersection. Not by I, more maybe look at it. Anytime there's an intersection, especially like that, or if you have this, you're gonna get great crashes. So all the, like, the way we reported to the state is the intersection of VMP and Shindon contributes to crashes forty. Because it's the light that's stopping people, and they're not paying attention. So the light is contributing back to the intersection. So, and I think the other thing that is important, for me at least, when A C H D does his classifications, they don't ask one. They don't talk about what's low, whatever Jenna just said. And so they do it based off of engineering studies and such like that. They did tell me that they did a study at forty-third Shindon for a day, and they watched twelve people cross that intersection. So they, you know, people that are already doing it, there's not that many people there for the school. One of the issues with this is right now, drop off, pickup, or answer is on forty-third. This would eliminate people who drop kids off and down eastbound on Shindon, turn left on forty-third to go drop them off. They wouldn't be allowed to do that, make a mark. They'd have to go down to forty-four, do sausage, or they go past and make U-turns.
Oh, they wouldn't be able to turn on forty.
You wouldn't be able to make left on, on to forty-third, which you can't now. We've eliminated lefts on forty-third on Shindon in both directions, and our crashes related to that. So this would eliminate one on forty-third together, which is right on the I just have, it's just too close.
Too close.
Driven the city for various, thirty years and seen these symbols and stuff. They, they just, they're not, the time on especially, even if you didn't say them for the fact that it was gonna be for the school, and you look at the number of hours that the school uses it, what's on here?
Are there any statistics on these, uh? I think it's a. Where people actually aren't paying attention and. And have a lot of accidents that people could, you know. I mean, are they, their own safety issue, I guess, on such a busy road like Chenden? I was just curious. I've, I've seen people run those before, right, when people are trying to cross, so Chenden's a pretty. Busy road, and I think that almost causing its own problem, the people not paying attention.
Oh, you ever see it right now, the, the Eagle Road, and they just, they just put a sign up there, you can signal on the left end. If you're going, if you're going southbound on Eagle Road, they put a left in between River Valley Lane and Fairview.
Yes.
Um, that backs traffic up on northbound Eagle Road through the intersection. Uh, Eagle wants, and so people are sitting that through red lights. Just so you can make some last look at Camper.
Um, Mayor, Councilmember Jacobs, uh, specific to that question, not, not to discount the, the chief whatsoever. On page twelve of the Kittleson Report. Um, six of the pedestrian hybrid uh, beacons were uh, reviewed in the report. Uh, with similar traffic and distance spacing that's being proposed, so Broadway, Used to Park Center, et cetera. Um, between twenty eighteen and twenty twenty-two, there were three crashes and they were all on the Twelfth Avenue. Uh, pedestrian hybrid beacon, and there are zero crashes on the other, so those are the specific ones that, uh, the Kittleson Report reviewed.
But they just measure people arterial, those are different arterial sites.
Um, they, they were intended to be similar in traffic flow and distance. So, uh, distance to the, and the next intersection.
Right, thank you. You know, I, the other problem with the data that we get from ACHD and ITD, having been around for a long time. Is the data's only as good as what's put in there, and having, and knowing how police officers write reports and what they, why ITD wants it, they don't. It, it's kind of garbage in, garbage out, that's one reason for us, we've gone to, where Coco Biagi is the only one that approved. Crash reports because he understands what they need and why they need it. Where our crashes are, when they are, and why they. Most other agencies don't do that, so. The data is only as good as what's.
But again, thank you.
Mister Mayor.
Yes.
Um, thank you for pointing those, the other examples out, Jenna, the one I was thinking of that would be a good. Example also was Wiley and uh, Colster, because there's one at Wiley on State Street. And Colster's only about the same distance, I think, away from. Um, Wiley as VMP is from where this one's intended to go. Obviously, state's a major thoroughfare too, to your point, I think that was a good point. Um, but that wasn't one of the ones they compared, was it?
Um, Mayor, Councilmember Rasmussen, no, that wasn't in the report, thank you.
Oh, and sorry, one more, how long are the, um, is the duration of the solid lights? Uh, on the.
I don't, so ACHD actually changed a lot of those earlier this year.
Okay.
Because of the perception that, that was some of the cause of the pedestrian vehicle accidents, and so if you actually sit and watch now sometimes. Sometimes the people, when they walk across, they're halfway down the block before the lights turn, so they're, they've increased their. When someone pushes a, a button to walk, they've increased that time.
Okay, okay, and I don't know what that is though.
I can answer why they do that too, uh, Mayor, Councilmember Rasmussen, I don't know the timing, but there is an engineering. Uh, uh, basis for what you're supposed to do, X number of seconds per feet that are being walked.
Yeah.
And the reason that they may feel longer, um, is for ADA accessibility, so if you have somebody that. Um, maybe slower, um, that needs to be long enough for them to get fully across.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, one more question, um. Oh, I think I talked about this, Jen, and this is just. I don't know if it's even a legitimate question, but can you? Can you have hours a day that they operate so that if you do have something like that, it doesn't. You know, it's not available for you during rush hour, say, as an example, so. You can use a pedestrian walk between ten and three, you're bound on final, I didn't know if, this.
I don't know what their rules are, but I, there are places around the city.
I've never heard.
They similarly use crossing. So, I don't know what ACHD rules are, and I, then I, unfortunately, when it comes to state or Shindin, ITD has. Say in that too.
But, oh, true.
Alright, so, probably two sets of words there that I don't know.
There, thank you.
Okay, uh, any other questions, Steph? Okay, Council, what do you want me to tell the highway district?
Miss, Mister Mayor.
Yes.
Um. I, I would like to engage in some conversation with fellow council members.
Sure.
Um, I, I think that when this, uh, or the concept was originally. Proposed, there was a lot of impetus behind it. Um, there was a lot of foot traffic and bicyclists by the school children. And that, of course, as you all know, is as significant a concern to me as I've been advocating for the pedestrian crosswalk. To be moved from Forty Second to Forty Third on Adams. And I truly believe that that is the best solution for the children and for the access to schools. Um, I believe that most of that, um, access is happening pretty locally now. If you, I would draw your attention to, um. Page five, uh, well, in the packet, page three seventy-five. If you look at the respondents and how much of. The transit is vehicular, you take the a hundred and ten and the third, or, and the seventeen. Hundred and ten by car, seventeen by bus, that vast majority is not on a bike or a walk. Now, I understand, and again, I strongly advocate for, uh, consideration for pedestrian and bicyclists. Particularly around the schools, however. Our current, um, reality is. Traffic and the traffic patterns have changed. We're, a- as we all know, we police a hundred thousand vehicles. And split that between Shindin and Glenwood roughly, fifty thousand cars traveling Shindin and then throwing a pedestrian. Uh, crosswalk at one of, you know, Shindin and Veterans Memorial Parkway, one block away. It, it would be one of those things where people go, huh. What bureaucrat approved this, because it's just so impractical in my mind. The traffic at, you know, Adams and Veterans Memorial is becoming untenable. Let alone, I've seen crazy things that say, I've been terrified for children. I just, I cannot envision a safe crossing at Forty Third. And Shindin, I just, I, it's, it's just about inconce- I, it's so hard for me to envision. How that would work out in practicality, for the safety of our citizens, for the safety of the people that are traversing Shindin. Through Garden City, I think the chief is being extremely. Practical in his approach and his comments, I, 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 I also totally agree, there should be, that's. A pedestrian crosswalk on Shindin at some point. But not at Veterans Memorial Parkway, that, that area i- is just. High risk for pedestrians and cyclists, frankly. I mean, it is worse than what, it's more scary than trying to play Frogger. You're like, oh, get across, little dude, what are you doing, I mean, it's. It's like watching somebody try to cross State Street.
Yeah.
You're just, this, Shindin is not a sleepy. State highway anymore, it is. High traffic and it's going to continue to be that way as we continue to see high density and more development to the west. People are still going downtown, they are still trafficking out of downtown, using Shindin. Out to Ten Mile, out to all, you know, the new homes and developments in that area. So I have extreme concerns and would strongly advise we not. Move or request that this pedestrian crosswalk move forward, I would. I would certainly consider and think it would be a good thing to move it further down, actually. In the Thirty Third Street, Thirty Fourth Street in that area. Because what we are seeing, uh, a current reality is people wanting to cross Shindin. From the Water District, the Waterfront District, to the Western Collective, to other, you know, wineries and. Social gatherings on that side of Shindin, but it's further down now, it is not being driven by the school children. Thank you.
Bet. Other comments or discussion?
Mister Mayor.
Yes.
Guess, my first, um, input into this would be. Um. That our city is, obviously, I'm stating the obvious, but we're densifying. Quickly. And there's developments coming on the south side of Chenden. Um, there's development certainly on the north side of Chenden, um. So, I think. That the intent of putting this PHB in this spot is actually good. Because, uh, some of the, uh. Bicycle pass that, that come together on U-Stick and come down onto Forty Third into Garden City. Um, it's a, it's a great direct way for people up on the bench. To come down and access the greenbelt, they're not doing it in numbers now, um, because there is no safe access. I think if we were to provide safe access, we would see those numbers go up. And I do think the spot, and I completely understand. Uh, where Councilmember Jorgensen is coming from and the chief. Um, but at the same time. I think we owe it. To our pedestrian citizens, uh, our, our citizens that prefer to use bicycles. To have easier access, safer access to get across Chenden to other places that they want to get to, namely the greenbelt. Um, namely, the, the, some of the things that are happening in our own city, the boardwalk, that's gonna draw a lot of traffic from the bench, I think. Um, and right now, there just isn't, yes, there's a crosswalk at VMP, but there's only a sidewalk, one side of VMP. Um. I think we need to think of. Um. Other modes of mobility than we do. Um. Than we do currently on Chenden. So, um, I'm in, I'm in, completely in favor of having this thing, in fact. I think we should have one at Thirty Second or Thirty Third and one at maybe Fiftieth or Forty Eighth or whatever, whatever other ones have been. Because I just think we're gonna. We're gonna be, there's gonna be a lot more people accessing a lot more amenities downtown and they're gonna wanna do it on foot. Certainly, there's gonna be all those people in cars too, and that's great, um, but I don't think we have enough safe crossings of Chenden. Thank you.
Good bet. Other comments?
Mister Mayor.
Yes.
So. I, I don't disagree with you, the, the problem I think I have is just, it's so close. To be, right, we need a crosswalk somewhere on Chenden, if you mentioned it down by Thirty Third or even closer to Fiftieth or wherever. Sounds like the chief, there's not a lot of. There haven't been a lot of pedestrian or bicycle incidents where people cross on VMP. Uh, that hasn't been an issue today, and so. I, we need these crosswalks, but this, it happened at a block or two blocks from VMP. Where it will disrupt traffic and it'll back up, and, and I think that'll cause its own huge set of problems. Of having, you know, people frustrated in the morning. Because they're backed up and backed up, so decides to cross that in the middle of the way at eight o'clock in the morning, and that's getting, you drive in there now, it's backed up all the way to. Forty Fourth or further in the morning, and then you crosswalk there, it's gonna. I think what it does to the traffic flow, like, these concerns, the chief's concerns are pretty valid, so I don't. It seems like the lobbying needs to be, we want one of these crosswalks, but just not. Two blocks from a major arterial where. A good portion of the city goes north, south, east and west. You know, at all times today, so, I don't know if that's not Shindin, it'd be great if you put something that goes over the, you know. Goes above it, right, people can go above it, but that's a whole different funding and. And project, but that might be something that we try to take grants for, or do something like that, so. Uh, I don't know if I think. I don't know if I would support it simply based on where they want, but the location. So we can have it anywhere else, further east or west from. VMP, I think that would be a, a good option, but that's fine, I'm just, kind of to your point, visualize what. Do your traffic and congestion and tempers and all that type of shit.
If, if I could, if I may add, one, one more thing, and I think, um, Jenna's memo, um, covered this. And I thought it was a very important point, and I meant to say that a minute ago, but, uh. What happens is, is, um, instead of people, let's say they need to cross Chenden. And they gotta walk three blocks to the nearest crosswalk, if they're looking for the safest passage that they could find. Um, there's, there's not many safe patches, passages, crosswalks across Chenden right now. Um, so, it's forcing people that do have to cross to do stuff we don't want them to do. Uh, you know, run out in the middle of the road, stand in the, stand in the middle lane until the other way clears, and then, then they make it. I mean, I think we need to. If, if it's just a couple of blocks, even a crosswalk away, people will not. Use it, so we, I think we need more, this one, this first one would be a great location because. Of the pathways coming off the bench, um. And then, uh, how, uh, low-stress Forty Third is to get from Chenden to the greenbelt. Uh, versus VMP, so, um, that was the last thing I wanted to add there, um, to your point, so, thank you.
Bet.
Mister Mayor.
Yes.
I would add that based on my observations, uh, and I. Do travel Shindin daily, um. In recollecting my experience, I certainly have seen pedestrians and cyclists crossing Shindin at VMP. Um, I have seen much more concerning attempts of people dashing across Shindin at Thirty Third and Thirty Fourth. A- and that is completely, a- a- I mean, there's no traffic control there at all. It is a complete frauder move, and, and so. I think we are all in agreement, we need to provide something for safe passage across Shindin. I just, uh, based on my experience right now, VMP is okay, it's not great. But people can get across VMP or, or Shindin at VMP. There's no solution further down. Shindin, a- and I, I. That's where I would like to see, if, if there, if there's funds and there's a project open, that, that's where I think we should focus. In the, in the short term, and see how some of this development actually shakes out and the impact it has.
Mister Mayor, one more, I'm sorry, um. I drive.
This is called a discussion. This is how you do it.
Um, I drive state every day. The PHB at Wiley. Um. It's not, it's, I don't know how, how many feet it is from Colster, it's probably about the same, it might be a little bit more, might be a little bit less. Um, but I don't see that that causes, this is anecdotally, I don't have, I don't know if. How many accidents are or anything like that, but since I drive it every day. That PHB is activated pretty frequently, but it doesn't impact even, even at five thirty, five thirty in the afternoon, you know, heading home. So, um. Again, I get, I get the point about it being too close to VMP. But at the same time, I'm thinking in my head of Wiley versus Colster and it not causing an issue.
May I ask, answer that, Eric? Certain, Colster is, is not VMP.
I, I understand.
The ones, there, there, it doesn't go across, the traffic volume. Compared to VMP, I don't know the numbers.
Okay.
It's not a thoroughfare to the hospitals, so, I, just the amount of traffic.
Very fair.
Through there, I think would be. My question, well, as far as the, the safe, safer. my question. Well, as far as the, the safe, safer route on Forty Third, uh there's more drive, and this is from a police law enforcement, not an engineer standpoint. There's more driveways, UPS pulls out of there, the school's there. We don't, we haven't had any issues with people using the sidewalk to go down VMP. So if they're not, they don't feel safe there, there could be other things where they could put up a Jersey barrier or something like that. Um the kids go from Answer and Future to the Boys and Girls Club. And I agree with Councilmember Jorgensen and why, and have just having watched her, even with the construction starting to wind down. The, the safety concern for the schools, for me, from a law enforcement standpoint, and they are moving that, whatever they call that signal, at Forty Second to Forty Third, is that corridor as we get more people in there, like uh to me as a Garden City, I owe that to Garden City. I don't necessarily owe the connections from people on the bench. I have to say, what's the safety in Garden City if you're staying out? So that's kind of my push.
So anyhow, thank you. No, and thank you for that point about Colister too. I think that's very valid.
Council President, you've been cogitating on this. You like that, Charlie?
I like that. Cogitating. I'm not sure if that's a word, but I can look that up here in just a second. No, um it's, it's, I think Mister Mayor, it's just because I, I appreciate so much the opinions of of people who I, I consider to be experts. Uh, you know, a traffic engineer, a, a firm of traffic engineers, our chief of police, um, a prominent business person whose primary place of business is there. Uh, I think back to the times I've, I've walked uh with students to school uh at an organized event and crossed Chindon with, with, with police cruisers in the intersection, lights on, and still, still felt very anxious. Uh, and uh so, you know, I just, it's, it's tough. Um, when when we have prioritized opportunities with our partners uh who build roads and funding is approved, it's tough to, it's tough to walk away from that. Because we all know how seldom we get that. Uh, I absolutely believe it's the wrong place after listening to the testimony and reading through the memos. But I'm afraid if we say no, we miss the opportunity for anything. With to Councilmember Jorgensen's p- position, there is a way to cross. It's, it's not ideal, but it exists. And I many times see um people in um wheelchairs or mo- mobility devices crossing uh Chindon, I guess at the Fred Meyer uh light there by the um by the fairgrounds. And then turning and moving east several blocks. Because there's not an option, there's not a safe option, right? Uh and I'm at the, at the age where I can still run across the street and take my life in my hands, but every day I get older. And every day I appreciate more and more seeing people in a mobile, mobility device trying to do that same thing. I don't know. I, I'm, Mayor, I'd like to hear your opinion.
Well, I, I don't think it's a good spot for it. I think it's a great spot for if I could add a few ifs behind that, it's a great spot. The, and then the the, the people from the bench, in my opinion, should go east on Eustick to Curtis Road and safely go across the street. If you're on a bicycle, you can ride across with the traffic. If you're walking, you walk across there. It takes longer, it's less convenient. One of the concerns I have with Forty Third is uh if you get across Forty Third and and a lot of this has been looked at through the prism of um helping the safety of school aged children. So Answer Charter School is kindergarten through eight. So I'm envisioning for the children component, it is kindergarten through eight. Now as a parent, a grandparent, a great grandparent now, well mediocre, I don't, but, but at any rate, uh, I can't imagine allowing kids to do that on, on their own for that. But if you do, then you've got that congestion with the traffic in and out of Answer. You've got UPS. Uh, you've got cars parked on the side of the road. Uh, it's, it, the whole area is congested. And the safest place, in my opinion, to be is in your car in that particular circumstance. So that's, that's kind of where I'm coming from. And I really, uh I really understand the planning perspective of, we've gone to all this effort uh in Boise to, to funnel certain modes of traffic to a, to a collection point. Now we gotta move it on, but uh it doesn't bother me a lot to ask particularly someone on a bicycle to ride their bike on Eustick over to Curtis and safely go across the street. Uh, pedestrians, uh you know, I, I know the, the, the backing up of the traffic uh really concerns me, especially when I can go right here and see what happens when the emergency signal on Glenwood where the fire station is turns red. And you've got traffic backed up. If that happens between three thirty and probably six o'clock, you've got people that can't come across from up the hill on a green light because the traffic's backed up waiting on that emergency. So um you know, people find a way, and I think they need to find a way uh without using Forty Third. That's my opinion. Further east, you've got a lot more room to back traffic up on a crossing if it's down further east, because you can go, you know, clear on down past the riverside and although at the wrong time of day, when you've got people coming off the connector, that many times aren't driving thirty-five miles an hour. They're driving sixty-five miles an hour when they hit the exit. I've watched them. I've followed them at a distance. But so it, it, it's a tough, it's a tough deal. It's not, my, my opinion is Forty Third's just not a not a good place to be. And it's not for the kids. If, if, if you're looking at Green Belt traffic, uh then by its very nature, a lot of that is uh based on personal decision to use a certain mode of transportation. It doesn't help with the handicap situation. You know, we have other programs perhaps to deal with that. Um, but you know, if you want to get down to Green Belt, take a bike ride, then ride two extra blocks.
Mister Mayor, to Councilmember Page's point, is it, is, in terms of the funds of the project, is it really a user or loser proposition? Or are we, can we work with them and say, hey, we want this project just somewhere else? So that, I mean, I, I just don't understand how that works with, with the funding. And I didn't know if it, if it's kind of like, we'll do this, you get nothing, or how, how does that work?
Well, uh it, it, it sometimes doesn't work very well. Uh, and by that, I mean, there's been time and effort and a procedure that got to this decision. And and there may be some that will say referring to us in the event that we decide to oppose this. Well, you guys aren't the experts and uh Chief Stanbaugh isn't a traffic engineer and uh we spent, you know, planning hours figuring all this stuff out. It's been years in the making to create a funnel to that Forty Third Street location, and that's where it ought to be. And so the money could go away, or you start a process and a procedure that would mimic this one, I presume, in some fashion to look at another location, and that may, that may or may not work uh in our favor if you want to look at it.
So the dollars aren't here for us.
I, I, I do dis, I, I don't like doing something just because the money's available. So that, that makes me nervous, but uh you know, uh, we got people running for the Ada County Highway District Commission. It's three this year. And if there's changes there, then you have a change, but you have a potential change in the whole policy and uh planning perspective. That's, that's possible. Uh, we've got a relatively new District Three engineer, the Idaho Department of Transportation over here. Uh, and so those, I don't know, I hate to, things can change and over a period of time, but
I, I think, I was thinking about the, the crosswalk at Wiley. So you look at that. So they redid that entire intersection at, at Veterans Parkway and State Street, and there's three lanes on all going east direction to absorb the back traffic, right? So they added a whole extra lane. They put in that crosswalk, but they also added an extra lane that could take cars on all sides. So there's, there's three lanes going west, there's three lanes going east at that intersection. So you'd almost, like you did something like that in terms of construction or redoing that Chindon Veterans, then you'd give more room, you know? And that's why I think that crosswalk can absorb more traffic simply because they redid and broadened wide that entire intersection.
I think where it's at, it's only two though, because it's about a mile.
Three, that is, it's the cause.
Yeah, but there's quite a distance between Veterans Parkway.
And Colister.
And Colister. So, because I, I, I drive that, I drive that too. You know, the, the
so it's
well.
Mayor, um, I, I'm, if I may, I had a thought listening to this discussion, and then it is a very difficult discussion where it's and, and either way you go, I think it's difficult, but I've heard a lot of um comments and discussion about other safety issues that may be fleshed out within the next year. Um, and that is related to that raise grant that ACHD has on creating the rest of the route sans the, the um, the crossing itself. And I don't know if, I know ACHD has requested an answer yes or no, but I don't know if additional information on how they're handling the rest of Forty Third as that safe route would help the council, if, if the council would be interested in a pause. And I know that, uh, that's probably not something that the, the chief would support, but perhaps that might give more details into the discussion. And just as a, a point of clarification to the mayor's point, um, I, I am a parent of an Answer uh student in how I see uh parents interacting uh with crossing on bicycles is they actually have the kids on their bike and they'll, they'll often drop off there. So I, I suspect you're correct. They're not um unattended where that was the initial um request to the city, but that's what I do see is parents will drop off their kids on a bike, either in a trailer, on a, on a backseat.
Yeah, and we've got collateral issues as well, counsel. We've got, we've got inadequate or zero sidewalks on Chindon Boulevard. Uh, we've been in discussions with, for years, uh, on a uh drainage plan for Chindon, which is a precursor to properly allowing us to tell people where they can put sidewalks. And then we don't have a good basis to require them to put sidewalks in many places because we can't tell them what the drainage function's going to be. It's kind of a, uh, ITD really is it's difficult because they're a highway organization and they get captured in these circumstances where they're in an urban setting. And so you're trying to manage from one perspective, which is move as many cars as fast as you can. That's the Idaho Department of Transportation. And now you've got them in a high density, low mile per hour, uh, well, really several miles now uh on Chindon Boulevard. And I can think of a number of areas, if you go west on, up past the state, formerly known as the Hewlett Packard property, clear on out to Highway sixteen, that gee, maybe there could be some of these pedestrian crossings and locations there, but the ITV's not going to do it because their objective is to move cars as fast as they can. We went through a a real uh fight, the lower, the speed limit on Chindon used to be forty-five. And people drove fifty to fifty-five on Chindon in basically the same condition that's in today. And uh the resistance was people going fifty-five get down through town faster than people going thirty-five. Because that's the mentality we have. So, so you know, this urbanization of the function of ITD uh is a, it isn't just locally here. It's, you know, the highway going through Grangeville. It's the, you know, we, we deal with it around the state. So it isn't because they don't care, they have a bad attitude or any of that. It's just, they have a, they have a mission and a priority. And uh the Ada County Highway District under its present policy position is uh emphasizing uh other alternate modes of transportation more than they have in the past. So now we, we're seeing more bike lanes. And we want to get, you know, we want to get people out of their cars. So we gotta make it, make it, gotta have a way to do that, so to speak. And we've seen our Green Belt turn in, from a access to the river, which is the way it was three decades ago. That was its intent. That's why parts of it are six or seven feet wide down through Garden City. It was, it was never intended to be a transportation corridor, but that's what it's evolved into in large part. And of course, now it's becoming more attractive because uh you don't have to be an athlete to take your bicycle on a, with electric bikes uh to, to take a six or eight mile bike ride to and from somewhere. So, so the whole thing gets, gets, it's kind of messy, but the, the my perspective is safety over convenience. And in, in this particular circumstance, that's where I, so so where do we go from here?
Are you looking for a vote, Mister Mayor?
Yes. Yeah, I want to, I want to be able to tell the, the district that uh, uh here's, if you're asking me for a wish, I'll give you a wish. Uh, I'd like to be able to tell the Highway District uh that uh we're concerned over the unintended consequences of having no control over when vehicles are going to be stopped on Chindon Boulevard. Right now, the signalization gives us that option. Uh, the chief mentioned it. I guess he mentioned it a couple of times, but it's not lost on, on me on how incredibly important it is to make sure uh emergency vehicles have access to St. Al's, which is the trauma center. So if you're going eastbound, uh and you hit a pedestrian cross where your opticon doesn't do any good, if it did do any good, you still would have to creep because young people might be Young people might be not paying attention and run across all those things, so. So make sure you can get your ambulance there and. A lot of people with medical issues are transported with our police cars too, so so. That's just. That's the genesis of my safety over convenience in this particular case, so. On that, on that, on that basis, it's not a good spot for it, we'd love to discuss, uh, have you do some research on another spot further east. Uh. We could discuss one further west, but. Uh. That's why on Overland, they can go over the top. I mean, those are expensive, uh, but that's, that's the way to do that if it was going to be a major quarter, so that's my position, so. If if with that general. If I could convey those general points uh to the Highway District Commission, that would be. My request. Or something else that the council wants to. Wants to do something else, so. I'm, I'm in your hands.
All right, well, council members, uh. We've, we've heard some great discussion and uh. This is one of those tough times to to be a council member, so um, a vote for yes. Supports the uh. The plan in our packet. A vote for no is to ask the mayor to. Convey. Garden City's position to not put the crossing where it's proposed. And feel free to put in any last comments, so Councilmember Jacobs.
Uh, I'm just. There's no good options, I I kind of lean towards kind of. Truce and I think the mayor articulated a lot better than I did, just. Proximity or not, like. It's too bad they can't use those dollars and set them aside and then maybe put some grants or something, something that goes over to the right. At that spot, you know. I'd drive to a lot for working as well, like. I kind of go to the point that, and I think Jenna's point that. Kind of also.
Councilmember Jacobs, could you step to the mic for the benefit?
When Jenna said, I'm sorry, about when she sees parents dropping off kids, they're not riding their own bikes. They're, they're piggybacking on their parents' bikes at that age, and so I. Knowing that, that there's not a lot of bunch of. K through eight kids riding their own bikes, trying to cut across Chinatown or using a B P M as a crosswalk, but they're, they're being escorted, I guess, by their parents. And it really is. Traffic uh would tend to. Not support that location, but really try to push ACHD about finding some rest.
So Councilmember Jacobs, yes or no?
No.
Councilmember Jorgensen.
No, with the request that the mayor. Work closely with ACHD to explore other options to retain a crosswalk. On Chinatown, but. Somewhere. Much further away from V M P. And I believe I propose thirty-third, thirty-fourth. Or. I I think there was a suggestion if you wanted to move it west would be forty-eighth. To fiftieth somewhere.
Councilmember Asmussen.
Um. Before I vote, I would just, I'll just say that um. I really do. Um. Understand. Where Councilmember Jorgensen and Jacobs. Um. I I I understand their positions and respect them, um. I just. I feel that the way that our city is changing. Very rapidly. That we need to move forward with one of these. Sooner rather than later, and I'm nervous that if we go back to ACHD with, can we look at another intersection? That that. I get nervous that then it's going to be another. X number of years, I mean, it's who knows how many years, even if, even if we all were yes on this one, how long that's going to take. But that is going to be a lot longer. If we explore that, so. Again. Totally. Um. Get where my fellow council members are coming from, but I'm going to be a yes.
Thank you. And Mr. Mayor, I'm going to be a yes on this, um, with all sensitivity and respect to my council members and the Chief of Police. Um, I, I'm. I'm highly persuaded by the information in the packet. Uh, as insofar as the uh. Engineering study, I realize it's in direct conflict with our chief's uh. Study or our chief's data. And I uh. I prefer to always vote with the police, so it's a little part of me is dying today, but I'm going to vote yes. And shame on me for not saying the same thing about the chief. Um, I do appreciate your perspective, that's certainly valuable. Um. And I really do like to agree with people in uniform all the time.
Okay, uh, well, somebody needs to make a motion so I can exercise my. Tie breaking authority.
So I believe the motion would be to. To deny, to vote, to deny the uh. The project. The ACHD project.
Uh. Uh. The the motion would be uh. To uh recommend. That. A crossing not be installed at forty-third and Chinatown.
I so moved. You mayor? We're making the recommendation not to put a cross crosswalk at forty-third and Chinatown.
Did you second or not?
Second.
Okay. Okay, I've got a motion and a second. Uh, discussion on the motion. Okay, uh, uh, hearing on for call roll.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Rasmussen?
No.
Councilmember Page?
No.
Okay, uh, uh. I'm going to vote yes on the motion. Uh, however, I want to make it clear uh that. This can happen over our objection because we don't have authority over I T D and we don't have authority over A C H D. So uh, this will be a recommending vote, uh, I will. Uh, inform. The Highway District uh that I had to break the ties. Um, on this particular issue, so uh. This doesn't mean it will happen and doesn't mean it won't happen. I just wanted to make that clear, so I vote, uh, I vote yes for the motion. Okay. So we're going to move on, we need to have an executive session, council.
We'll start.
Yes.
Oh, we still have the the six month financial.
What did I, what did I forget? Oh, I'm sorry.
It's in.
Sorry, item uh, new business, item two, uh, Lisa.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, um. Do you have the uh six month fiscal year financials in your packet ending March thirty-first, twenty twenty-four? Uh, not a lot of changes in the notations. Uh, one of the things that we have done. From the previous review is to update the payroll expenses, we took those out through. The end of the year based on the turnover uh in the, in the various departments and any market adjustments that were made in salaries during the fiscal year. So those are the big items that we see variances in moving forward, um. Just a few items to note that are a little bit different. One of the things we're seeing, not a huge increase, but our our work comp. Claims are up a little bit, uh, what can happen with work workers comp is. The rates per uh industry position might change. For the value for their um. Payroll. It's either up or down. But specific to Garden City, we get what's called a a experience modification rate, and that's based on our specific usage. This prior year, we've had uh some more usage than usual, and so our experience rating went up a little bit, so we noticed a little increase there. Both uh Charlie and uh the chief have had our workers comp. Person, uh, safety person come out and. W- one of the things they like to do is talk to us about areas we might be able to reduce that. You know, unfortunately, a lot of the injuries do occur in law enforcement and. While there are things they can do for safety uh in the, in their position, sometimes it's just ends up being a necessity to tackle. You know, to tackle someone and and unfortunately people do get injured, so that's just one of the areas where we notice an increase and we are actively working to. Bring those rates down as best we can. So again, not a lot of changes from the previous uh month adjustments, might see a few more uh. Variances, but. The big one will be, we'll continue to watch payroll and we'll continue to watch the sales tax revenue. We've received two payments now, the. Second installment for January through March was up. From the previous year, uh, about ten thousand dollars for Garden City, so there does seem to be a little bit of an uptick in spending and maybe that's just. The the volume of people moving in. We are, we are noticing that up, I did get the A I C projections for next year and they are lower than they have been. Uh, for the twenty-five budget, so. We're just keeping a very close eye on all line items, all departments are staying aware of their numbers and.
We're pretty convinced we're going to be in good shape. They'll take our budget this year. Uh. But we're. I'm anticipating we're going to have. Uh. Going to be really close going into twenty-five budget ones. Uh. We're. Uh, based on our revenue projections that. We haven't presented to you yet, we will because they. Literally, Lisa and I are. We get information that impacts those. On such a regular basis that. It's a little early. In my view to. It'd tell you a different story every two, every two weeks, okay? Uh, but uh. If if our revenue and expense projections uh uh. Were to play out based on what we know or think we know or what we're. Um. Taking an educated guess on the biggest of those items, well, one big element of those items is we. Won't get our new construction role, which is. A direct addition to our tax base until July. Uh, hopefully they'll come early, but they don't have to get it to us until July, so we're, we're guessing. Uh, so we're. Projecting, uh, we're in the red at the moment. And we'll see how that that progresses and it's, you know, it's a low six-figure number, uh. It's not unusual, I've seen it lots of times. Uh, but. Uh, when we get to the point where we want to present something for you to consider and massage as a council. Uh, we want to. Do everything we can reasonably do to be as accurate as we can. Uh. And. Uh. Avoid. Using fund balance. As a balancing factor. So. That's kind of where we are, we're going to, we're going to finish uh twenty twenty-four uh. With revenue over expenses. And. Uh, the temptation is to roll that into your next year's budget, but that's. That's building something in that may. May be counting on. Things that are putting us in the black this year, a lot of the reason we're going to be in the black is payroll. Vacancies. So we go under the assumption that we're going to be fully staffed. Uh, if this, if we had. Eight hundred employees. We'd probably take the fully staffed number, I would at least. Uh, at about eighty-five percent. Because you have people coming and going and you're, you know, and it takes time to replace them and all that stuff, but. Uh. That's, that's not the way we. We've been rolling here, of course, you know, that's. Decision of council committee later on, but anyway, so. I'm really pleased with the way our departments are managing the money this year and we're doing well, we're fully staffed now and. I think in all our departments at the moment. Tonight, even the library.
Okay.
Uh, we have a lot of turnover in the library, uh, part-time, but not a lot. So. It's. Uh, we're going to hold it pretty close to the vest as far as uh. Expenditures that we weren't planning on. For at least into July, the last quarter of this year, if things change, then. Uh. We've got some, the police department needs some. You know, I mean, they got thirty-year-old toilets that need to be changed, whatever it is, but. But Cory's got a, you know. Yeah, I was going to mention that last time I used my recorder, that's, but, but, but. You know, we've got a request from the library, I want to talk to Lindsay about that, uh, I think we're going to. Hold off till we get into the fourth quarter before we. And we'll talk to you about that before we loosen the reins, and if that's. Something we can look at as a one-time situation, but. That's it, I'm always an optimist and and we've. We've made it since nineteen forty-nine, so I'm not at all concerned and. Uh. The the fruit of having a significant fund balance in relation to our total general fund budget. Uh. Makes sleeping at night pretty easy. So we're, we're in good shape, I believe we're well managed. And uh. Uh, but we're going to play it pretty, pretty conservatively till we get into the fourth quarter and we have some. Some more sales tax nu- numbers with this new construction. Does it, it doesn't help us as much as it used to. Uh, six, seven, eight years ago. We're. We're just about half the levy we were then, so what that means is. You know, the value of the new construction. Only. Adds to our property tax base. At about fifty percent of what it did six, seven, eight years ago. And. And that's in the middle of an inflationary something. So. As Lisa mentioned in her, in her memo. Uh. We've guarded our cash, uh, we've kept almost all of it except for our operating money. In the local government investment pool, it's been throwing off in excess of five percent. Uh, month, and that has. Compensated for. Uh. A. Uh. Lower performance on the property tax revenue. Uh, it's compensated for the challenges we've had with our. Not being fully staffed in the police department. Uh, in the terms of fines and forfeitures, uh. So. Now. You know, again. Uh, that, that cash we hold. Uh. Is. You know. I I love reviewing the statements every month. Lisa usually hears me run in there, go, holy cow, you know, whatever it is, so, so. Uh. So you're going to get more detailed reports and as far as the budget goes itself, uh. Next month. We're going to start doing, having some preliminary budget meetings, so you understand. Uh. What the evolution of developing that is and. The council has a great deal of latitude on. What you want to see and and what you appropriate in the form of the budget. The starting point that Lisa and I are going to give you. Is basically maintaining our current level of services in all departments. And that allows you to. You know, challenge those, it allows you to. In- increase or or decrease or emphasize or de-emphasize. In- increase or, or decrease or emphasize or de-emphasize, uh, within that framework. Uh, of course, it allows you to agree with them, but it gives you, gives you a good, good starting point, because it's a zero-sum game, so if we. If we want to increase Department A, then. You know, one of the other three or four departments, we're going to, we're going to make some adjustments there, so, so. So you'll get a, you'll get to maintain the current level of service, and it's a great time for us to figure this because we are fully staffed, I, I'm. I think we, I, I like that, so. We aren't guessing anymore, we know what our, you know, the police budget, uh, payroll drives our payroll budget to, so now we've got everybody in place. Brought the, the last group in tonight. Uh, and Lisa doesn't really guess on. She looks at every officer individually. We know the history of how many hours typically they work a year, if they've been here at any time. So, I'm giving kudos to Lisa on this, because she gets right down in the weeds, uh, whether they're going to qualify for, uh, specialty pay. When they're maybe eligible for a change in rank or a change in certification, uh. Uh, you know, and of course, uh, the chief is. You know, locking arms with her on figuring all that stuff out, so can really get into the weeds on that, uh. We, we do a similar thing, not to that same degree, but we do, you know, uh, some components of that when we're looking at our. Uh, public works personnel, because, uh, there are things that can impact their rate of pay, that's a different funding source. So that's enterprise. Uh, so. Anyway, sorry, I got running, running along there, but I just want to let you know how we're going and. I'm available, Lisa's available, you want to come in and, and, uh, go through. Uh, any of our numbers to date. Uh, you're, you're all, you're always welcome to, we can, we can share it, I'm just not. You know, a, a budget is a good faith effort. Based on information you have at the time you make the decision. And so. Once I roll something out for you to consider. Not everybody understands that definition. And sometimes, uh, they take. What is meant to be something where it's preliminary, it was subject to significant change. And, and that becomes. Yes, that becomes, that becomes taken as a, a more of a factual matter, so that's. That's why we're a little cautious about rolling this out a little later in the process. And we have the luxury of doing that because of the size of our city. So, um, anyway.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I will be out the month of June. Is there anything that I should prepare that you would require of me before I'm out for the budget discussions?
Uh, I think we ought to have a meeting before you leave. And, you know, uh, and, uh. Uh, we can share any information we have at the time. And do that then, yeah, I mean, if you say, Mayor, we want to know what you. What your chicken scratching is, I'll have it here as the next meeting, but I'm just telling you what our. What my MO is, but, but my MO is subject to your blessing. Period, so the city council throws purse strings. And if you have a procedure or something that you want done, uh, you know. Uh, three of you can make it happen, that's, that's just the way, the way it works. Okay. We want an executive session.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
In accordance with Idaho Code seventy-four. Two oh six sub one F, I move that we move into executive session to communicate with legal counsel. After which we would, uh, re-adjourn it for, uh, decision, action to be taken, potential action.
Second.
They've got a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? For press.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Rasmus?
Yes.
Thank you, uh, we're now in executive session, let's wait just a minute for the recording and.
Okay, we're recording.
Okay, council, uh. We've, uh, we're going to reconvene the meeting at eight o'clock. And, uh.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to approve resolution number one-one-seven-six dash twenty-four. Um, amending the agreement. To not release liability to the Pacific Company. With all other terms in place, second.
A motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? You're done with clerk call roll.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Rasmussen?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Thank you, next out, I mean, item on the agenda is adjournment, maintain a motion to adjourn.
I so moved.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, we stand adjourned.